Mr. Clerk, would you call the meeting to order, please?
Certainly. Those present are Mayor Granatowski, Councilor Bordelon, Councilor Baumgartner, Councilor Franco, Councilor Heath, Councilor Obree, Councilor Parker, Councilor Schmidt, and Councilor Zepiri. All are present.
Thank you. RTM Moderator Eben, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item number three, the public hearing, 2018-224-4, adoption of an ordinance to regulate single-use plastics and polystyrene food service, public hearing. Mr. Clerk, please read the call to hearing.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town Council in accordance to the Town Charter, Section 553, on November 19, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. in Community Room 1 at the Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut. To amend Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances, Town of Groton entitled "Licenses, Permits, and Miscellaneous Business Regulations" by adding an ordinance to regulate single-use plastics and polystyrene food service products. The full text of the proposed ordinance is on file in the Town Clerk's office and on the town website, www.groton-ct.gov, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 14th day of November 2019, Town of Groton County town clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Karan. If I could ask everybody to please silence their phones. Before we begin, we have a brief presentation by the Conservation Commission, and then planning staff will also deliver a couple remarks before we begin. So if you could just identify yourself, and then you can begin. Thank you. Is it working?
Hello?
Yep.
I'm Kristin Distante, 82 Irving Street in Mystic, and just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Is this showing up there? Is it going to project on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm a scientist, a retired educator, and a member of the Conservation Commission. And those of you who were here last night at the EDC, I apologize, it's like the exact same talk, so I won't feel bad if you need to check your phone or do something else, you know, while I'm talking. So first of all, I don't know whether you knew that back in the 16th century, a prophet predicted that Groton might be considering a plastic ban. His name was No Straw Thomas. And if you go through the checkout line at the grocery store, they always ask you paper or plastic, because baggers can't be choosers. Okay. So the reason I'm here tonight, I'm going to show you an outline of the slide. Okay. The outline is going to be putting this in a global context, the timeline of the work we've done preparing the plastic ordinance, the survey we did, the results of the survey, the education forum that we held, what is and is not included in the ordinance, and then a closing. So this is pretty much every beach everywhere. Everywhere in the world, the beaches look like this. Plastic waste right now is swamping the planet, but people are starting to do something about it. In Connecticut, we have a bunch of communities, including Stonington right next door, a lot of shoreline communities, have already instituted some sort of plastic ban. Around the United States, you can see the states highlighted in blue, have already implemented statewide bans on at least certain items. And even around the world, Africa, the dark blue countries are full bans, light blue is partial bans, and then yellow is contemplating or considering implementing some kind of ban. So it's happening. So why is this important in the world? Well, what's happening is the plastic is a lightweight material, and it just washes off the continents, it washes off and down into the rivers and streams, and washes down into the ocean. We have these big circulations in the ocean, clockwise in the northern hemisphere, counterclockwise in the south, kind of like in your -- oh, I could actually do that, right? So they're going, they're clockwise this way, counterclockwise. So it's kind of like in your toilet bowl, everything swirls and swirls and swirls. So all the garbage ends up in the middle. And in every major ocean, we have a giant garbage island. This is some places where it looks. Lots of little broken-down pieces of plastic that are up and down through the water column, in the sediments, just pretty much everywhere. So globally, we have a need for regulation. There's an overwhelming volume of plastic. It's just piling up and piling up. There's inadequate disposal methods in a lot of countries. They don't have recycling, they don't have proper dumpsters, or, you know, landfill or whatever. They just kind of throw it in the ravine, the next rainstorm is just washing down. Attached to a lot of these plastics, we have toxic chemicals, things like PCBs, DDT, and dioxin cling to these particles. And we have garbage islands as large as the state of Texas in some of these ocean gyres. So a lot of the shipping now actually has to go around the plastic oceans, because it's a hazard to navigation, it's a hazard to fishing, tourism, and just generally, you know, it's not nice out there. And there's a lot of impact on marine life. And the plastics are also big contributors to CO2 pollution, because they're petroleum products, so both in the extraction of the petroleum, the manufacturing, the transportation, the production, and then the disposal, they're contributing CO2 in every phase. Okay, so in that context, the town asked the Conservation Commission if we'd be willing to, like, look into this and see, what are people doing, what does our town think about this? And we said yes. So from September to November 2018, we researched plastic issues, we looked into other towns, other communities, what ordinances are they doing, what questions did they ask their people in the surveys, other states, who's doing what? And we developed a survey. In early December, the day ran a nice article informing everybody about the survey. The survey was live on the town website, and we tried to publicize it as much as possible. It was open for, like, from mid-December to mid-January. We also had paper copies that we distributed to people, just trying to get as much input as possible. I personally went to 25 businesses in Mystic, up and down the streets, trying to get input from business owners. And you could tell on the survey whether it was a business or a regular citizen. We were concerned, because it was the holidays, so on January 3, the day put another article out there, just reminding people, hey, guys, that survey's out there, go ahead and take it, we want your input. We spent January and February analyzing the results of the survey. And in March, so happened, the state passed Senate Bill 1003 banning plastic bags, which is, I think, in effect already. In the spring, we started to work on some drafts of plastic ordinances, and the town asked us, would we make an education forum to, like, inform the public more about the issue? And we said sure. So we worked back and forth, looking at the ordinances, how many microns thick should a bag have to be, what should and shouldn't we ban, and so on. So in September, then the day ran another article informing the public of the upcoming plastic forum, which would be on September 26. In October, we then had a, based on input from the public plastic forum, we put together a draft ordinance based on the input we got. And then here we are, in November, we're having public hearings. So here's the survey. We had 483 respondents, which is considered statistically significant when a national survey that you see all over the news has maybe 1,000 people in the country. We had 483 people right here in the town of Groton responding. 68 businesses and 415 residents responded. Here's an example of the type of question we had, where you could be either very negative in your response, or very positive, or neutral, so we gave people a range of choices. How much would you support businesses reducing single-use plastics? And one thing that jumped out at us, the businesses in brown, the residents are in blue, there was very high agreement between the residents and the businesses. And we thought perhaps businesses would object more, but it seemed to be a good correlation. You can see mostly the results are pretty positive. Similarly, this question is, businesses will receive goodwill by reducing single-use plastics? And again, a lot of agreement, strongly agree or agree, was up in the 80 percentile, up in 80, and then the rest was about 20 percent. And then another question, how committed are you to reducing single-use plastics? Well, we were surprised that the businesses mostly showed a higher level of commitment, 62 percent versus residents. And we thought maybe that's because they're really more on the front line of it, they know how much plastic's going out there. We were surprised by that result, and pleased, actually. So I just summed this up for you in a pie graph, where you can see the blue, the smaller wedge here, those are the people who are against it. Those are people who have little or no support, the rest were either very supportive or moderately supportive. So the vast majority of that pie, 92, 90-something percent are supportive of this, 91 percent. Similarly, with businesses, the graphs look very similar, slightly, a little more resistance in the businesses, but a similar appearance. So the other thing we had in the survey was a comment section. So people could just write in their comments. I personally went through and combed through the comments and rated them favorable, unfavorable, pro, con, whatever, analyzed them. And we found 79 percent positive, with a lot of actually enthusiastic support, like, yes, we should do this now, thank goodness, it's about time. And then we had people who also said, we need to spend the time working on the existing trash, litter, and recycling ordinances that we have, and make sure that they're better enforced. We had about 14 percent who expressed negative views, and those were split among people who, first of all, thought maybe government shouldn't be in this business. Secondly, business owners are going to bear too much of a burden. Three, other things are more important for the town. And four, there's some disabled people who have to have plastic straws. Then there was about 6 percent who said, I really don't know enough to answer, I need more information, please give us education. So we said, and by the way, we also had a question on there, would you be willing or interested to help the town move this forward? We had 106 people say, yeah, I'll help. Okay, so the next thing we did was we put together an education forum. That was on September 26. It was at the community room at the senior center. It was a blustery rainy night, it was pouring, we had 140 people come out, and we had had places where people could talk and learn about the plastic, but also give input back to the town. And six primary topics were addressed. First of all, what's in the ordinances, what's included? What are the health, environmental, and economic impacts of plastic? What are the alternatives to single-use disposable plastics? And more information about the recycling and disposal of plastics. So these are some of the people we had in for the forum. We had SCARA, the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resources Recovery Authority. Those are the people, when you put your trash on the curb, and the truck comes and takes it and hauls it away, they're the ones that actually have to figure out, well, what are we doing with this trash now? There's no market for recycling, we have to landfill it, we have to ship it to the press and burn it, whatever, they figure it out. We had the Mystic Aquarium, Big Y, Kush, which is Cleanup Sounds in Harbors. Dr. Evan Ward from Yukon gave a keynote speaker, a speech on marine microplastics. We had the Economics of Plastic Bags by Larry Dunn, I did the Alternatives. Human Health Impacts were done by Ann Schmidt and Tom Olson. We had the Plastic Impact on Global Warming by Roger Kuntz. We had a TED Talk. And then we had Bruce Lofgren from the town of Groton explaining the ordinance so people could understand. And then we also had an opportunity for people to vote. So here's the aquarium, Mary Ellen Metaleska, they had a table, some of their primary concerns on plastic are both ingestion and entanglement, their concern for the marine mammals, they take care of these animals. Human health impacts, Ann and Tom did, and that's Ann and Don Distante there, did research on the human health impacts, but which at this point, there's a lot more work that needs to be done. There's potentially a lot of harm, it's not clearly understood how these things are impacting human health. We had SCARA, as I said before, with their displays. And the format of the education seminar was, you could talk, you could ask questions, you could go back and forth, you could really have a conversation and learn. Here's David Aldrich from SCARA. And then Dr. Evan Ward giving his speech on microplastics. And what happens with microplastics is larger, like a detergent bottle in the water, or a water bottle or whatever, they break into smaller and smaller and smaller pieces, but they don't really go away. Those pieces get smaller and smaller and smaller, and, you know, marine life mistakes it for food, they can't really tell that it's not something they should eat, and so they do. So it's a concern. And Yukon also had a table where they had oysters, live oysters under a microscope, and you could put, like, plastic in there and watch them with their cilia, like, pushing it around in their bodies. And Larry Dunn is not here tonight, but is a great statistician, he did an economic analysis. This was kind of surprising to us, that single-use plastic, while it seems free at the point of sale, if you add up the cost over a five-year period, it ends up costing about $452, that's the cost to the town. Biodegradable's even more expensive. And again, if you go down to reusable cotton, which could be used for five years in a row, it's only $40. And that seems kind of counterintuitive, that it really would be cheaper to use a $40 bag than a free bag? But the fact is, there's a lot of extra cost hidden in the bag, in the free bag. The costs is the manufacturing fees, litter collection, CO2 impacts, impacts on marine and fishing, recycling, energy reclamation. So Larry took all these actual costs into account. It cost, well, a bag might cost a business a penny, but it cost the town 17 cents to get rid of it. So there is a cost that all the citizens are paying to, like, dispose of all this material. The cost he couldn't factor in, because it's hard to define, is the cost on tourism, health, and ocean cleanup. He did not put those factors in. So, like I said, he's the king of the spreadsheet, anything you want to figure out, Larry will analyze it, crunch it, find the numbers, do the research. But these are some of his results that he came up with costs. And you will note that some of these plastic materials that, right now, are still cheaper, but if we ever get industrial composting in the town, the cost of disposing of these materials will come way, way, way down. Okay, my table was alternatives, because I want to work with businesses and help find alternate solutions to make this easy for everybody. So I had an alternative table. And there are a lot of successful businesses already in the area who have already made this conversion. The business owner on the left, I went to him and I said, I said, well, why did you switch over? He said to me, see, it was a no-brainer, people are clamoring for this. And I said, yeah, but aren't those containers a lot more expensive? He said, well, you know, they used to be, but the price of those is coming down. So that's anecdotal from him. So people are doing it, it's happening. This material is called compostable, it's made of cornstarch. It seems like a good solution, but again, without industrial composting, which requires heat and moisture, this stuff really is not that much different than plastic. So it's, at this point, not a good alternative for us. And even Dunkin' Donuts is doing it. I came across this yesterday morning, Dunkin' is switching to, away from the polystyrene and to cardboard paper cups, starting in northeast, starting immediately, or no, starting in a couple months, I think it is. So we then had, the last station at the forum was a place where people could vote, they could express what they thought should and should not be banned. Last night, I had my graphic in here, I don't know where it's not here tonight, I wish I did. But here it is. The question was, you know, what should we ban and what should we not ban? And it was pretty clear, I didn't expect it to be this clear, that people want things banned. The only thing that there was a split opinion on was the fees on the paper bags, where half, it was kind of half yes and half no. Okay, so when you get to the actual ordinance, these are the items that are included in this ordinance, plastic carryout bags, which has already been done at the state level, plastic stirs, plastic straws, and polystyrene, otherwise known as styrofoam, cups, bowls, lids, plates, trays, and clamshells. These were all things that we felt that there was pretty easy alternatives available for, and wouldn't put any kind of undue burden on anybody. These things that are not included, dry cleaning bags, door hanger bags, newspaper bags, if you want to go to the store and buy hefty, hefty cinch sacks or baggies, they're not banned. If you are giving blood and there's a bag of blood at the doctor's office, that's not going to be banned. If you want to go and buy a bunch of nuts and put them in a bag at the grocery store, those bags will still be there. Prepared foods or bakery goods, if you're distributing charity items. And if you have, let's say something was manufactured out in Ohio, and it's been packaged in containers, and it's ramen noodles or whatever, and they're bringing it here, yes, you could still buy that. And furthermore, if you go to the butcher, and they've already got, like, slabs of meat and slabs of fish that's on polystyrene and wrapped, that's going to be okay. And we also did not include plastic cutlery, because at this point in time, without industrial composting, we can't really dispose of that any other way but landfill or burn. So there was really no point in banning those at this point. Okay, so why is a plastic ban important to Groton? Well, first, you know, we're a shoreline community. Our whole, you know, our marine ecosystem here, our fisheries, our oyster beds, we're a very tourism and boating reliant economy. So we're right, we're kind of on the front lines, like, if plastic thrown in Wisconsin, ends up on the shores, our shores. So also the financial costs, the litter collection, the garbage hauling, waste disposal, nobody's buying recycled plastic anymore, so the cost is going up. Landfills are getting full, so the cost is going up. We have the human health impacts, which we don't know yet exactly what they are, we don't think they're good. There's an aesthetic and quality of life issue, you don't want to go to the beach and be stumbling over other people's plastic garbage. And I know there's a responsibility issue, but it makes its way out, it blows away, it comes out of containers, somehow it makes its way. And I think there's a big business opportunity for an enterprising businessperson to bring these new products in and help make them available to businesses. There's a lot of economic opportunity in inventing new products, and just environmental stewardship that we have for the future. So, I want to go back, I can't go back, okay. Okay, so it seems like, oh, no, this is not our problem, this is happening elsewhere, this is, you know, places where they're less responsible than we are. See, we don't have to get rid of this thing? Oh, well. But no, this is Fishtown Road, Jim Furlong, a local member of Groton Conservation Advocates, went out and just picking up garbage along a short stretch of road. And there it is, there's these sort of indiscriminate, sort of whatever they are, plastic bags, the nip bottles, the disposable cans, the, you know, polystyrene takeout cups, water bottles, straws, plastic bags. This is what's out there in here in Groton. Also, the beautification committee, they did a little, oop, how do I go backwards? There we go, forwards. Well, that's the other way, okay. Oh, the beautification committee did a kind of a pickup. What did they find? Nip bottles, water bottles, booze bottles, all kinds of plastic sticking around. The problem is, it doesn't break down, it just stays. So why Groton, and why now? Well, first of all, there's overwhelming public support for this. I think we live, we are privileged to live in an amazingly beautiful place, right on the water, this is so special here and so beautiful, people come from all over the world just to vacation here. I think we need to preserve and protect our outstanding quality of life. The things we're potentially banning here are low-hanging fruit, these are easy changes that have been made in all kinds of places with no problem, and I think we have a moral obligation to our children and to our grandchildren. And that's end. And this was brought to you by your friendly Conservation Commission. This is Larry Dunn, Michelle Fitzpatrick, myself, Bray Rafferty, Tom Olson, Ann Schmidt, and Bruce Lofgren. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Mr. Reiner, do you have opening remarks before we begin the reception of communications?
Sure. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Okay. Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Just to reiterate a couple of the points brought up, under the direction of the Town Council, staff began working with the Conservation Commission, researching this subject, constantly coming back to the council, looking for direction of what it was that you were looking for us to prohibit, regulate in the town of Groton, and what the goals were for the council on this matter. And just to summarize again, the things that we would be regulating would be plastic carryout bags, plastic stirs would be banned and cannot be made available, either complimentary or for a fee. One item that I think there might be a little bit of confusion on is plastic straws, they would be banned. However, under the current draft of the ordinance, plastic straws may still be provided to patrons who specifically ask for a plastic straw, or patrons with a disability or other impairment requiring the use of a plastic straw. So that's one item I think there has been a little bit of confusion on. Also styrofoam containers used for takeout and food and beverages, as well as food service establishments not being able to take their own food and package it in polystyrene containers. So those are the things that we're looking to prohibit. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. I think the counselors are good, and we're ready to receive the communications from the public, correct? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay. When you are recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to the matter at hand, which is the public hearing. All right, so, looks like someone's name was crossed out. So Bruce Jones, followed by Cindy Fortner, please.
Hi, I'm Bruce Jones, from 60 Flanders Road, and RTM-elect for District 7. I commend the efforts of the town of Groton, the Economic Development Committee, and the Conservation Commission for their efforts over the past year, looking into reducing the use of single-use plastics and polystyrene in our town. I want to thank all the volunteers for the countless hours they have given to working on this issue. I took part in the online plastics survey, and in September, I attended the Plastics Education Forum at the Groton Senior Center. I thought it was excellent, and it gave us a lot of good information and showed us some options. Last night, I attended the Plastics Business Forum, held by the EDC and the Conservation Commission. There was a good representation of local businesses and citizens, there was an excellent exchange of ideas and questions on the ordinance, and I like to see the town listening and the transparency that is going on in this process. One key idea I liked is to organize some meetings where the businesses could exchange with each other, and the town, on alternative products and solutions that they have found to meet retail needs, and to show how to adapt to the new ordinance, if and when it goes into effect. Businesses and citizens will need to adapt, and we all need to work together to reduce plastics in our environment. Again, I thank everyone for all the hard work they've done, and will be doing, and I support this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Cindy Fortner, followed by Roger Kuntz.
Hi, my name is Cindy Fortner, I live at 45 Prospect Street in Mystic, and I'm also RTM-elect at District 6, glad to be here. I just wanted to actually give you an opinion. I was born and raised in California, I've been living here in southeastern Connecticut for over 30 years, but I still travel to California often. Plastic bag ban has been, it's been a part of California life for many, many years, and adjustments were made, and now it's the norm, it's the easy thing to do. I go back there, not having been there for six or 10 months, and I'm like, oh, I forgot my bag. I do it like once. And it's just the way things are done there, and it just, it doesn't seem to be difficult, it's just a part of life. They take it a step further in California. I was in a little tiny town called Cloverdale, and we were at a, having coffee outside, and there was a young woman there, young woman, with a little baby in a stroller. So she's busy. She took her items that she hadn't finished. Not only did she not ask for any kind of container, she actually reached into her bag, pulled out her own little container, and put her items in there. So we can even go above and beyond this, and she obviously seemed happy to do it, and I thought, oh, I got to remember to do that next time. I went to Plasticoceans.org, just to try to encourage people to think about why we're doing this, even though Kristin gave us some lovely examples. More than 8 million tons of plastic are dumped into our oceans every year. Annually, approximately 500 billion plastic bags are used worldwide. Each has an average, what they call, working life of 15 minutes. I think we all understand the cost, as Kristin already explained to us beautifully. If anyone's unsure, you know, about how important this is, you can just Google the Great Pacific Garbage Patch, look at some of those images, it's, if you can stomach it, it's pretty sad and heartbreaking, but it certainly, certainly should encourage all of us to make an effort to reduce these, the amount of plastics that we're using right now. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Roger Kuntz, followed by Zell Stever.
I am really proud of all you guys that did this. This is really, really important, and I want to just say a couple things. First of all, in our household, I'm Roger Kuntz at 7 Bradley Lane in Mystic, and we're trying to be plastic-free in the house. It's really hard. It's really hard. But this is going to help. And when you try that, and you realize that in the average bottle water, there's at least five microplastic grains of something that you drink. And one of the most popular brands of water, there was like 50 or 60 microplastic particles. And so this stuff is everywhere, and the only way we're going to get rid of this is by, as we're starting here, having a plastic bag ban and things like this on single-use plastics. I also want to stress that it's in concert with what the state's doing, which you already know, and Senator Murphy is co-sponsoring a bipartisan know, and Senator Murphy is co-sponsoring a bipartisan bill, Save RCs Act 2.0, which is to keep waste like plastic out of the oceans. So, that's an international adaptation to some of the legislation we're looking at. So, it's at all scales, so this is a really cool thing for this town to do. I also want to stress, I run a small sustainable practices company, and mostly I've been working on civil and civic matters, so I haven't been doing the company too much. But, this is a really great opportunity for new business growth and sustainable products in the Groton area. And my wife and I are already talking to somebody about starting a business that would take this to the next step and so on and so forth. So, I really want to commend you. It's a good thing to do, it's the right thing to do. Businesses will adapt fast and realize they're saving money, and our environment will look great. Thanks.
Thank you. Zell Stever, followed by Bray Rafferty.
I'm Zell Stever, live at 81 Main Street. I'm here to support a ban on the single-use plastic bags. I think it's, I've heard people say that it would be better not to further regulate the public, and my response to that is, it is always cheaper to prevent the problem from happening than trying to clean up the problem after it has happened. And you saw on these slides what's happened globally, and we contribute to it because we, in this community, have in the past not taken the time to keep the bags and keep the plastics out of our environment. So, it's much more cost-effective in the long run to get the bags and the plastics out of the system before they get into the system and are disposed of, and often in very improper sorts of ways. And the other thing I was going to say is that I think, you'll appreciate this maybe, I saw a young schoolperson on Main Street, and they were humming a little ditty, which I think is actually very good. And it goes like this: Roses are red, violets are blue. I've got my bag, how about you? And so, I think that is maybe a little acute, but it works. And I do, in fact, carry around now, thanks to a certain other person in my family, carry around a bag, and we avoid picking up plastic bags. And I must say, last summer, when I was first confronted by the, going to Big Y, and I had forgotten my bag unfortunately, and I wasn't going to pick up a bag, and then I got charged for the paper bag. And I think that's a good idea, because basically what that does is that puts a burden upon us to actually pay attention and bring the bags with us when we go shopping and so forth. And so, thank you very much. And I'd like to say that the Conservation Commission has done a terrific job in terms of looking at this issue. Obviously, their look at it went far beyond just the plastic bags, the single-use plastic bags, but it is an absolutely important issue. Last winter, we heard a professor from Penn State talk about her graduate work in plastics, and she sort of wanted to find out, where are plastics in the environment? So, she started at the top of the watershed, and she worked down to the ocean. And there's very few at the top of the watershed, but when you get down to the ocean, there's these huge numbers of micro-small plastic particles in our environment, and it's just a huge problem. And I should also add that because she was a grad student, she had to have a control, and she thought beer would be a good idea to do that. So, she tracked what was in beer, and it turns out that there was less plastics in the beer, but more in our water. So, one wants to think carefully about where you pick up your water these days. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bray Rafferty, followed by Ashley Kuto Tool.
Bray Rafferty, 98 Somerset Drive, Mystic, as well as Chair of the Conservation Commission. The Groton Conservation Commission supports the draft ordinance regulating single-use plastic and polystyrene. For the past year and a half, the Conservation Commission has worked with both the Town Council and the Planning Department to develop this ordinance. Last winter, a survey of Groton residents and businesses was made on the reduction of single-use plastics, followed by a plastic educational workshop in September. This ordinance is an outgrowth of those efforts. Last night, some members of the Conservation Commission also attended and participated in the Economic Development Commission's Business Plastic Forum for Groton's business community, who will be directly affected by this new proposed ordinance. The Plastic Business Forum had good discussions on how the plastic ordinance will affect their business and costs associated with the new paradigm. They pointed out some bumps in the road if the ordinance goes forward. Most appeared to see the winds of change coming, and that change may have its difficult parts until the full adjustments are made. In closing, the Conservation Commission has tried to address the Town Council's request for direction to reduce plastic waste stream that often ends up in our beaches, waterways, and streets. The Commission began by looking at the downstream side, better ways to recycle, reuse, and repurpose, but the final recommendation is source reduction. Eliminate the source of the waste, and our environment can begin to heal. At the federal level and state level, there has been poor to no guidance from our elected officials. We in Groton need to be leaders in our own stewardship of the town, and this proposed ordinance will help to move us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Kuto Tool, followed by Roseanne Katusky.
I am Ashley Kuto Tool. I'm here from the Dunkin' Donuts locations here in the town of Groton. My family and I own, sorry.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Ashley Kuto Tool, 113 Whittaker Drive in Stonington. So, we have five Dunkin' locations here in the town of Groton that my family has owned for over 30 years. So, I'd like to thank the councilors for being here today to hear our concerns as well. I think the question posted to the town in the polls was talking about a reduction of plastic, which I think is something that we can all agree with. A reduction of plastic is definitely something that we need to see, and businesses do support that. But what we're here tonight is about a ban on plastics. Of the over 160 towns in the state of Connecticut, there are currently 18 towns that have some sort of plastic ban use, and I tried to do my best to look up all those towns and everything. And 14 of those 18 towns have a ban just on plastic bags. The four other towns, they have straw-by-request, banning straws at sit-down restaurants unless by request, and there's only one other town that I could find right now that just November 7th launched a full ban on the plastic straws and styrofoam cups. So, it's, we would definitely be, you know, the first town, one of the first towns looking to do something this drastic. Dunkin' is transitioning to double-wallpaper cups. It's something that's been in the pipeline for Dunkin' for many years. We've been trying to get away from the styrofoam cups, but something with being a franchise is we don't have options here. Whatever our brand tells us we can get is what we can get. That's all that we can offer. So, the double-wallpaper cups are coming to our area just by the notion of the fact that they're transitioning it into the northeast first. So, within the next few weeks, you will be seeing those double-wallpaper cups in our stores, but it is coming at a cost. We have about a nickel increase on each cup for the cost of this, but it is something that we're happy that the brand has worked on. But it takes so long because the brand is looking to find something that our guests still get the same experience. So, the straws is not something that we're there yet with. I have a paper straw, which is Dunkin's paper straw in my cup over there. I got it on the way here. You can barely drink out of it. I can't pull it out of the cup because it's going to rip. We do not have a good alternative for our straws at this point in time. And the increase of the cost on the straws, so yesterday I'd called our distribution center, I got the cost for our large straws. Today, they called me back with the cost of our smaller straws. It'll be a 550% increase per straw that we're looking at at this point in time. And it's not a crazy difference from when I looked up the average cost of a paper straw. It was around two to three cents in the industry, and these are just a little above two cents. So, it's not that Dunkin's crazy off, and they're trying to get a good paper straw that's going to do the best it can, but at this point in time, we have nothing that can really do what our customers are looking for. I do know that some areas have, other restaurants that have transitioned, they've brought back in plastic straws because of the customer feedback that they did not like the straw. It has caused some customers to go to other locations for the use of a plastic straw versus the paper straw. I think something that we need to start doing in society is holding people accountable for their own actions. So, when there's litter on the side of the road, someone did that, and these people need to be held responsible. We have litter laws. When was the last time anyone heard of anybody getting punished with a litter law? We have them in place because of this, but it's not enforced. And right now, the businesses are being held accountable for individual people's actions. And I think just as a society, we really need to start looking at people's individual actions and start saying, you guys need to be responsible for doing it. You know, bring a bag, bring this. But at this point in time, I think that this ordinance is just stretching a little further than other people have because of the nature that other towns haven't done this because of the burden it's going to be imposing on businesses. Starbucks, you know, they looked at transitioning over. I know by 2020, they're going to be transitioning out straws. But what they got now is a new lid of plastic that has more grams of plastic than their lid and straw combo right now.
You have one minute.
Sure. Thank you. So, it's just, we are very limited in our options of what we can do, and this ban is definitely going to affect us and our customers, and I don't want to see that happen. I do believe that something needs to be done, and there are steps in the right direction. I just believe that this ordinance might be going a little bit further than people intended for it to, and I appreciate the time everybody has put into it and the time you guys have given me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Roseanne Katusky, followed by Jason Heine.
Good evening, everyone. Roseanne Katusky, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM, Representative District 5. I want to thank Ashley for bringing the alternate perspective to what we've been hearing tonight. And my comments are, I agree with everything she said, but my comments are a little different. The Town of Groton ordinance banning single-use plastics is not equitable. Why? Because the city of Groton and Groton Long Point are not covered in ordinance. Last I checked, both are part of the Town of Groton. This ordinance, in my opinion, is government overreach. I know I am doing everything I can to recycle, and I'm sure everyone in this room is as well. What's next? Banning me from buying coffee cups and stirs? Where does government overreach stop? I better start hoarding, okay? Last night, we heard, and also tonight, that switching from a styrofoam cup to a paper cup will cost a Dunkin' Donut franchise owner five cents per cup. Does the Town of Groton really believe that it is equitable to place this additional cost on only selective businesses in the Town of Groton, but not the city of Groton or Groton Long Point? I would also like to bring up that China, Indonesia, Philippines, Thailand, and Vietnam are dumping more plastic into the oceans than the rest of the world. Not Groton. Again, 90% of the planet's plastic pollution comes from a few rivers in Asia and Africa. Not Groton. I believe it is futile to fight against this ordinance because I am confident it will pass the Town Council and RTM. But, we must admit that it is a feel-good ordinance which will provide a few results. The best thing the Town of Groton can do for the environment is to pick up the litter on the sides of the streets and roads in town. If all property owners took responsibility for keeping their properties free from litter, as well as the properties across the street if vacant, that would be proactive with actual results. One last question. After we ban styrofoam cups for paper cups, what happens in 20 years when we find out that the paper cups are bad for us? Why? Because they're held together with glue. Thank you.
Jason Heine, followed by Eugenia Vilagre.
My name is Jason Heine. I'm from 23 Dennison Avenue in Mystic. I'm on the Stonington side. I was invited by the Groton Conservation Advocates to speak to you and share with you our experiences in Stonington. I and two other members of the Plastic Bags and Straws Committee, the Ad-Hoc Committee in Stonington, are here to share with you our experience and show support for the movement you're making. I joined the Plastic Bags and Straws Committee in Stonington back in August of 2018, and I represented one of the members of the, many members of our community who just was very concerned about this and wanted to do more research into whether or not an ordinance made sense for Stonington. I was also joined by members of the disabled community. There were two members on the Ad-Hoc Committee that represented two different chambers of commerce. There were also two small business owners on our committee, as well as a representative of Kush, Cleanup Sounds, and Harbors. So, we had a pretty diverse set of backgrounds and interests on our small Ad-Hoc Committee. And I'd also like to point out, this was not something that the town handed down to us, but rather, this was something the community asked for. The reason our Ad-Hoc Committee was formed was because members of the public had asked the town to put something together. So, it was from the bottom up, not the top down. We looked into whether or not such an ordinance would make sense to Stonington, and then, if so, we had in total 90 days to draft an ordinance. So, you can imagine, it was a lot of work for us, and we got right to it once our committee formed. We began by not, by making sure we didn't reinvent the wheel. So, one of the things we did was travel to many towns in Connecticut and in Rhode Island and meet with former committee members, or government officials, or members of the public who had been involved in creations of ordinances in their own towns. And we interviewed them, and we asked them about their own ordinances and what it took to draft them, and what it took to roll out the process. We then had a public hearing. Support was overwhelming in favor of a ban on plastic bags and straws, and I'll point out that, like you, we looked into limiting use of straws, not an outright ban. That was because one of our members, Farah, who represented the disabled community and is an expert on ADA compliance, ensured us that an ordinance could be written in order to protect the disabled community and to not discriminate against them. So, we simply drafted the ordinance around that. Rollout went very well. We had a logo contest, which involved the community. The logo is now on our bags that we have passed out to community members. It was a lot of fun, and I even stood at a tent during the Arts Festival in Mystic with folks from Big Y, who were giving out free reusable bags at our, as part of our rollout. In sum, we completed drafting our ordinance in 90 days and successfully rolled out our new ordinance last spring and the summer. As of November 2nd of this year, our ban went into effect. The funny thing is, we, that was our singular mission when our committee was asked to be formed. Now that we have completed our task, folks from the public are asking if we could remain a standing committee and look into additional items that are particularly harmful to our environment. We're perhaps going to look into foam, or balloons, or other environmental hazards. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you. Eugenia Vilagre, followed by Liz Racebeck.
Good evening. My name is Eugenia Vilagre, and I live at 76 Riverview Avenue, Mayor Granatowsky, and members of the Groton Town Council. I am speaking on behalf of Groton Conservation Advocates tonight to urge you to pass this excellent ordinance after adding one additional item, a paper bag fee, as soon as possible. We are a nonprofit advocacy organization dedicated to the protection of Groton's natural resources through public education and political action. We support the ban on single-use plastic bags. Why? Health. Americans use 100 billion plastic bags per year. Connecticut uses 1 billion plastic bags each year, and Norwalk about 30 million plastic bags before passing their ordinance. Only 1% are recycled. The rest pollute our waterways, our landfills, and our air when they're incinerated. More than 100,000 plastic bags end up in the Long Island Sound each year. Plastic doesn't break down completely either on land or in water. It degrades into microplastics. In Long Island Sound, these microplastics are ingested by marine life, so the microplastics that are maiming or killing wildlife are also in our food chain and our bodies. 90% of table salt contains microplastics. We don't yet know what the effects are. Plastics contribute to climate change because they generate heat-trapping gases at every stage of their cycle. Doctors consider Doctors consider climate change to be a health emergency. Cost. Now that China no longer accepts plastic, municipalities are paying more to dispose of recyclables. The bags slow down or break down the recycling machinery, which add costs too. They're ugly, hanging out of reach in our trees. The good news: The 200 cities and municipalities that have passed ordinances have reduced the number of plastic bags in residential areas, storm drains, and rivers. They've also reduced the amount of residential and commercial waste and saved in plastic processing fees. We also support the ban on stirs and straws. And we especially support the ban on polystyrene cups, bowls, and clamshells. However, because Patricia Taylor from Environment and Human Health will be addressing this issue in more depth, we will focus on bags. And last but not least, we ask you to reconsider including a 10-cent fee on paper bags to be kept by the merchant. Why? Research shows that a 10-cent fee for paper bags, coupled with a ban on plastic bags, is the most effective and legally protected way to institute an ordinance. Only one year after Los Angeles County implemented its bag ban, there was a 95% reduction in the distribution of all single-use bags and a 30% reduction in paper bags. San Jose, California, has seen an 89% reduction in plastic bag litter in storm drains, and 60% reduction in creeks, and a 59% reduction in city streets. It makes no sense to switch from one waste stream to another. The production of paper bags also has serious environmental consequences. The fee will be helpful to small businesses by equalizing the playing field for small and bigger businesses. If all businesses charge for their bags and the business keeps the fee, it's easier for small business owners to buy into the plan.
You have one minute.
When businesses pocket the fee, there is no additional work for town staff. Our sincere thanks to the Town Council, town staff, and Conservation Commission for all your very hard work on this ordinance.
Thank you. Liz Raisbeck, followed by Patricia Taylor.
Good evening. I hope my voice holds out. I'm Elizabeth Raisbeck. I live at 81 Main Street, and I am also, I am co-chair of Groton Conservation Advocates, as you all know, because I pass through you all the time. So today, by lunchtime, this was really amazing coincidence, I had a phone call, and it was Shelley, and I don't know Shelley. And she said, is this Groton Conservation Advocates? And I said, yes, it is. She said, well, can you send somebody over here to Electric Boat to clean up the trash? It's a mess around here, and I keep my yard very neat, and it's a mess, and nobody's picking it up. So if there's anybody here from Groton City, pay attention, because Shelley, I've sent her to you, to the council. So I've been thinking a lot about the meeting last night and the concerns of Dunkin' Donuts, which are quite understandable, the cost of switching customer alienation. So I thought, well, Westport Dunkin' has been doing this for 10 years. So I called up a couple of Dunkin' Donut shops in Westport and said, do you serve plastic straws? And she said, not really. We do if somebody asks for them. And I said, well, is that a problem? And they both said, no, it hasn't been a problem. So I really think we should try this and see how it works, because as John Reiner pointed out very early on, this is not a ban. This is discouragement. If somebody feels they need to have a plastic straw, they can. So let's see. Yeah, so, so what we're after here is to change human behavior, as several other people have mentioned, just as we did when we introduced recycling 30 years or so ago. And frankly, that was much harder, to suddenly start remembering to pull your stuff out of the trash and put it in separate bins. But we did it. We learned, and we do it. And this one, to me, seems much simpler. And giving the stores the option to serve a plastic straw seems to me the escape valve that stores will need to take care of problems. And so if we're feeling terrible about not having an iced coffee in the afternoon with a straw that melts, just think about this. 500 million plastic straws are used daily in the U.S., enough to wrap around the Earth two and a half times daily. Straws are among the top 10 litter items that are found in the International Coastal Cleanup every year, top 10 items. There are no recyclers here yet, as Kristin mentions, industrial recyclers who can handle plastic straws. And straw stays in the environment for hundreds of years, killing and harming fish birds and other wildlife. They're in everything, including us now.
You have one minute.
We don't know what their impact is, and that's scary. Thank you. Now, I'd like to just introduce Patricia Taylor with the environment and, come up here, Patricia.
She's next on the list.
Okay.
So this is Patricia Taylor, followed by Chris Coon.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Taylor. I'm Director of the Plastics Project for Environment and Human Health, Inc.
Could you give your address, please?
Oh, I, my, my address is 1191 Ridge Road, North Haven, Connecticut is the office address. I live in, I'm a resident of Milford. I'm here tonight at the invitation of Groton Conservation Advocates, who asked me to come and lend a little perspective on some of the science behind the draft ordinance you are considering. EHHI is a 10-member, nonprofit, science-based organization composed of physicians, public health professionals, and policy experts. The organization is dedicated to protecting human health from environmental harms through research, education, and the promotion of sound public policies. We are not a membership organization, and all of our support comes from foundations and committed individuals. We accept no money or funds from businesses or corporations. You are among at least 14 Connecticut communities that are currently considering similar measures to prohibit single-use plastic bags. 20 communities have already passed bans: Westport, Greenwich, Mansfield, Hamden, Stonington, Washington, Fairfield, Glastonbury, Weston, Stamford, Norwalk, New Canaan, New Britain, Middletown, Wyndham, Guilford, Newtown, Darien, Branford, and Madison. The ordinance you discuss tonight also seeks to ban plastic straws, stirs, and polystyrene food service products. We support your efforts on these items, especially your prohibition of the use of polystyrene food containers that may be used by children. We know children are especially vulnerable to toxics in our environment, and they should never be directly exposed to toxics like styrene, which is a component in polystyrene food service products. As the Children's Environmental Health Network wrote, "Over 50 chemical byproducts are released during the manufacturing of polystyrene, contaminating the air, water, and communities that live near these facilities." Polystyrene is made up of multiple units of styrene. Styrene is believed to be a carcinogen, that means cancer-causing, by the Department of Health and Human Services and the International Agency for Research on Cancer, which is an international organization. Because children's bodies are developed, still developing, and because we adults are responsible for the well-being of all of the children in our community, public schools should be the very last places we should choose to use food service products made from polystyrene. If you can ban them nowhere else in the community, please prohibit them in your schools. We are facing a perfect storm for solid waste management. The market for recycled materials has collapsed. Communities that could previously sell their recyclables are finding they must budget funds to carry them away. At the same time, towns and cities are up to their eyeballs in disposed plastic packaging and litter, including the single-use plastic and polystyrene items you seek to ban tonight. None of these can be recycled through curbside recycling programs. EHHI is working to reduce the use of plastics because of a growing body of scientific research that shows the impact on human health from chemicals and plastics. We're basically catching up with industry. Two groups of chemicals, phthalates and bisphenols, are of special concern. These are used to respectively soften or harden plastic. They have been found in human stool samples collected all over the globe. Both bisphenols and phthalates, some at very low doses, or especially at low doses, have health impact, including endocrine disruption, which means messing with someone's hormones, diabetes, cancer, obesity, ADHD, and health, and heart problems. As with other chemicals, they may present an increased risk for infants and children.
You have one minute.
As a shoreline community, the measure you consider is especially important because plastic litter from your streets ends up in Long Island Sound, contributing directly to ocean plastic that harms marine life, and ultimately ends up in our human food chain. The ordinance is not a punishment. It is actually a positive action. It will improve the quality of life and health of your residents. It also serves as a good model for your neighbors, especially for those towns that hug the coast. Residents in other communities who have passed similar laws feel empowered and engaged, and retailers have embraced the change. EHHI strongly supports your ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags, plastic straws, stirs, and polystyrene food service products. And we also urge you to add a fee of 10 cent for paper bags, with a fee to remain with store owners. And I'm just going to add to the comment, we have found in our research that such a fee on paper actually increases the efficiency of the, of the ban, and helps the store owners recoup any costs they might have additional to their regular cost for any packaging that they provide. So thank you very much, and I'm glad to answer any questions. I've provided information to Groton Conservation Advocates, and please feel free to share it in any short or long form. We ask only for attribution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Coon, followed by Sidney Van Zandt.
Hello, my name is Chris Coon. I live at 104 Irving Street here in Groton, and I stand here in support of each and every one of the provisions in the ordinance. One cost that hasn't been mentioned here tonight is the cost of distress at living in a world where it's very difficult, as was previously stated, to actually use environmentally friendly containers. And I think that I acknowledge the importance of behavior changes and the very real risk that many members of the business community may feel with respect to making these shifts. I also want to say that Groton is a location where there have been businesses that already have made voluntary changes, and that any business that steps forward voluntarily or is making the effort in response to the changes in terms of the ban should be applauded and highlighted in terms of community support and actually giving business to those enterprises in acknowledgement of their contribution. I want to be part of a community that is stepping forward in stewardship. There are other communities in the state that have not done so, and I would be very pleased to be part of Groton Town as a leader in this respect. It's an asset, and I want to say thank you to the council, mayor, and the commission in making this happen. I think that the ordinance, in fact, is just the beginning. There is all manner of packaging in our stores and the foods that we buy that, at this point, are not being touched, and that the idea of businesses coming together to think creatively about how to further improve our stewardship is a wonderful thing as well. And I thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you. Sidney Van Zandt, and then Claiborne Van Zandt.
Good evening. My name is Sidney Van Zandt, and I live at 3 Front Street in Noank. I support and promote that this ban on single-use plastic bags be passed now. At the Conservation Commission, that was so well-attended, I just can't hardly believe that they have done such a wonderful job. Look at all the people that showed up at that meeting at the senior center, from all sorts of walks of life. And one of the biggest tables was put there by Big Y, and they were handing out bags. And then, if you went to that grocery store, there was no longer a little metal bracket at the end, so you could help the one that was checking out by filling it up with a plastic bag. You had to sort of balance your Big Y bag there to put it in there. But no longer is there a plastic bag thing at the end. So that is a major, a major business, which is food, is where you need the bags the most, that is really supporting you to pass this ban now. 50 years ago, I was in this business, all volunteer, 10,000 hours, I think. Recycling was started by the Groton Conservation Club of Fitch Senior High School and a number of the junior highs with three barrels out in that parking lot. One for clear glass, one for green glass, one for red glass. And by golly, in about six months, the town Public Works had to take it over because there was so much support in this town. You didn't have to vote for it, it was happening. Public Works had to do it because we couldn't break up enough of that stuff to take it in a truck up to where it was recycled. And so if everyone got up in this room and said, yes, we want this to happen, this is what happened 50 years ago by our kids to help solve the problem that was very big then, we weren't even into plastic. There wasn't plastic then, hardly. So I really support that you pass this ban now, and I would push that you would also throw in the paper bag, 10 cents. It helps the guys. I've gone in, and if I didn't have a bag, they'd say, oh, well, we'll have to charge you 10. I'd say, no, I've got two or three bags here. So please pass it. Everybody in the room who supports this ban, would you please stand up? I'd like to see you stand up. Tell them, tell them that you support this ban!
All right. Claiborne Van Zandt, followed by Sue Sutherland, please.
Mr., I would like to support everything my wife, Sidney. I don't think there's any need for repeat.
Thank you. Sue Sutherland, followed by Sima Evan, please.
Sandy's a very wise man. My name is Sue Sutherland. I live at 32 Neptune Drive in Groton. I briefly want to second other support for this ordinance, and also to thank the Town Council and town staff, and particularly the Conservation Commission for its extraordinary leadership on this key issue, for Groton and really for the world. I think quite often, we forget that the U.S. is a huge producer of plastics. These are shipped all over the world, and they are not easily disposed of once you get to a lot of countries. So they pollute places, such as the Far So they pollute places, such as the Far East. So we need to be leaders in this, and for me, I think it starts right here in Groton. And it's difficult at first, but I think we can do it, and I thank you for your support in this.
Thank you. Sima Evans?
Hi. Sima Evans, 51 Jupiter Point Road, and I'm a RTM representative of District 2. And I also want to thank the Conservation Commission and the town council for passing this ordinance, which I support. I want to say I'm an avid recycler, so I was upset a few in September when we had the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Authority come to the RTM meeting and give a presentation on recycling. And what I found out was that even though plastics are recyclable, very little of them are recycled. And that's because of the way we handle our recycling with single stream, the mixing of different things, the contamination, the fact that China has pulled out its market for these things. In fact, plastic bags, which are recyclable but have to be recycled in a separate manner, those actually are really destructive to the recycling machinery, so actually impede the whole process and cause people to have to go into this terrifying-looking equipment to clean it out every hour or so. So I really believe we need to reduce our use of plastics where possible. I teach at UConn Avery Point, and for about 10 years, my students have been going over to Pine Island where we do a beach cleanup. We just did it about two weeks ago. And I have to say that we have a never-ending supply of marine debris that we find there, which is great because I use it as a teaching tool, and we dissect it. And what we find, and what it's estimated is confirmed, is that about 80% of the plastic or the marine debris that we find there is actually coming from land. It's not coming from the sea. It washes off of the land and ends up there. About 60 to 80% of that debris is plastic or styrofoam. About 60%, and what others have estimated is 60% of beach debris is plastic and 90% is floating debris. And I got to say, that includes a few Dunkin' Donuts cups, as well as Gatorade bottles and Nips. And in fact, cups, food wrappers, and lids, and cigarette filters account for over half of all marine debris that's collected. Now, the plastic does break down, although it takes a while. It takes about 450 years for a plastic bottle to break down. But when it breaks down, it really breaks down into smaller pieces of the same thing, so what you get are microplastics. And when I was in Bermuda this summer on a vacation, we were going to the beach that was near where we were staying. It's called Church Bay Beach. It's a lovely beach. And it was actually horrifying to see this beach was completely covered in microplastics and large plastic debris. And when you went swimming, this plastic actually floated in the water in a thick soup. I have photos of it. I wish I could show you. You could just scoop up the water, and your hand would contain plastics. I would go home after swimming. My body would actually be covered with microplastics. I would pick them up. The first time, actually, I thought it was, I was making breakfast, I thought it was like a piece of bread, and I put it in my mouth, and I realized I was actually covered in plastic. So this is actually a real thing. We have, you know, these plastics that are now at unfortunately super-high density in some parts of the world floating around. And at this point, these small plastics enter the food web because they're buoyant. They float like plankton, they look like fish eggs. They're actually positively selected, studies have shown by many fish species and bird species. So they enter the food web there. And if you want to read a particularly horrifying article, The New York Times ran an article about Indonesian tofu-making operation last week, where they actually are taking the plastics that are jettisoned by the U.S. and using it as fuel to cook the tofu. And it has entered their food web, and they have eggs from the chickens which forage among the plastic ash from this process that now have the highest concentrations of these plastic contaminants in the entire world, and people are eating those eggs.
You have one minute.
Okay. So, you know, obviously, we're impacted by this, and if you want to focus on other species, then the plastics are also ingested by marine animals, including fish, shellfish, birds, marine reptiles like turtles, and marine mammals. And this leads to mechanical entanglement as well as ingestion. When it's ingested, you get intestinal blockages, and also there's toxicity associated with the plastics. But the plastics also adhere other toxins, so they're actually vectors for other contaminants that then poison these animals. The breakdown, as a previous speaker said, does include alkaphenols, which are endocrine disruptors. And one of our UConn professors, Dr. Hans Lauffer, has shown that these alkaphenols are actually related to shell disease in lobsters because they are actually disrupting the molting process. And so I just want to conclude and tell you, the EPA-funded Long Island Sound study has now a stop-single-use-plastic campaign, and I'm really excited that we're going to, you know, hopefully join that effort. And, you know, I urge you to pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Genevieve Surf, followed by Justin Primo.
Sorry. [laughing]. I am Genevieve Surf, 60 Hillside Avenue in Noank. I do want to quickly congratulate the town council for getting back in here. So many of you are such old friends that it really cheered me immensely to see you back here. I have been, ever since I moved back to Groton from New York City, I have been very active in conservation, thanks to the Groton Open Space Association folks who turned me on to conservation, and I'm now so completely addicted, and I'm such an activist that I can, what Sima just talked about gave me a panic attack. I've seen so many of these birds destroyed by plastics, by things like fishermen leaving fish hooks, and birds, eagles, picking up the fish with the fish hook and feeding those to their babies who then have the fish hooks. All the lead used by the hunters to kill animals that then, again, the raptors eat the lead and die of lead poisoning. What's going on in our world is absolutely abominable, but the one thing nobody even mentioned about plastics, which I think is one of the most worrisome things, is where do we get the plastics from? We get those from the fossil fuel industry. And as you know, the rapacious need for fossil fuels in the world is causing us to go drilling in places where we really shouldn't drill, like the Arctic Wildlife Refuge and offshore oil drilling plants, which inevitably have, often have really terrifyingly horrible accidents as in the Gulf of Mexico. So reducing our plastic use would also reduce our need for so much fossil fuel use, which would be tremendously valuable in all respects. I also want to thank the Conservation Commission. Bray Rafferty has been amazing. People forget that he started the toxic waste dump fad years ago, and I actually saw him there myself in his outfit, collecting all the toxic waste for Groton, and they have done a fantastic job. The advocates have done an incredible job of putting together this data with the Conservation Commission. I'm incredibly impressed. I wanted to suggest a couple of things. I have, oh, can somebody hold up that little bag there, the little yellow bag? I found this, I don't know where I bought it, but it's actually, it folds out to an entire little plastic bag. So when I go into a store, CVS, whatever, and I've forgotten to bring a bag, I can pull that out of my pocketbook. It's incredibly convenient, has a little string. I don't know where you can get it, but I was going to suggest to the Groton Conservation advocates to maybe have part of their website dedicated to tricks that you could use to reduce your plastic use. Amazon also has some great glass bottles with a little flip-top lid, and I have a big Poland Spring dispenser, and I fill all my glass bottles with water, and I use those. I have big ones for the table, and I have small ones to take with me. And the flip-top lid is great because that means you don't need any plastic or anything like that. The other thing you can do is if you've forgotten your bags when you go into the grocery store, and I got that idea at Aldi's because Aldi's does a funny thing. They don't wait for you to pack your bags. They throw everything back in your cart, and they make you go to the back of the store, and then you pack your bags there. And I thought, gee, as long as they're throwing everything in the cart, if I've forgotten my bags in the cart, I can just have them throw anything in the cart at Big Y or wherever I go that I've forgotten my bags, and then just go to the car, pack my bags there, and return the cart. So there's absolutely, you don't even have to pay the 10 cents for the paper bag. You know, you can just wheel the whole cart over to your car and fill your bags there if you've got the bags in the car. Bags are also very useful for all kinds of other tasks I've discovered, like sorting out all the junk in your car, sorting out things in your house. So that, you know, you find these secondary uses for things that are absolutely amazing. And I want to remind everyone that when they first came out with the dog poop laws in New York and everywhere else afterward, people screamed bloody, oh, you know, they weren't going to pick up the dog poop and blah, blah, blah. Fortunately, the mayor of New York was clever enough to put the police force out in full force for the next two weeks, ticketing people who weren't doing it. People quickly got the idea. Before you knew it, there was no more dog poop on the streets of New York.
You have one minute.
And now even here, everyone is picking everything up. Same thing with smoking, by the way. I live in France and Germany a good part of the year. They all screamed bloody murder when they said, you know, the government said you couldn't smoke in restaurants. They said, "Oh, we're going to be out of business. Nobody's going to want to come in here if they can't smoke in here." Well, I can guarantee you that the beer houses in Germany are still completely as full as they ever were, as are the French restaurants. So, business gets along just fine with these new rules, and I think everybody, you know, should just do the right thing. Because as Chris pointed out so nicely, when I'm in Germany where they do a lot of the right things, my distress level really does go way down. And I would love to see my distress level go down in this country, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Primo?
Good evening, council. Sorry for my phone, that's where my notes are. My name is Justin Primo. I'm resident 116 Elm Street in Noank. And more importantly for this, for this evening, I am a co-owner of a restaurant, Manana Cafe, here in Groton. And me speaking is more on that side of the business side of running a business that is definitely impacted. I spoke last night, and I have done more research today, and the cost for us to change is not that much. It really isn't. The change we already made was the most expensive one, and that was switching from plastic bags to paper bags. That, we've already taken that cost into effect. I do feel for Dunkin' because as an independent business, they don't have the autonomy that we do, and I can only imagine your frustration because it's like you're getting it from both sides, which is terrible, and I definitely feel for you. But my feeling is, good businesses adapt. That's how you stay in business. Burger King, you can now get a vegetarian burger there because they know the public wants that. Look at how often the automotive industry has to change to new regulations all the time. And if you don't adapt, you're going to die. It almost happened to two of the big three in Detroit 11, 12 years ago because they didn't adapt. And then they were forced to, after we bailed them out, to change their ways, and it's the only way they stayed in business. You have to adapt as a business because consumer opinions are going to change, their desires are going to change, the regulations are going to change. You have to adapt. If you can't adapt, find a different business. From my understanding, there actually is not a plastic bag ban in Connecticut. It is a tax if you use plastic bags. If you look at the way Big Y, Stop &amp; Shop, and Shop &amp; Right have handled that, rather than charging the tax, they're like, "We're going to get rid of the plastic bags. We're going to take that 10 cent tax, and if you want a bag, you're buying a paper bag." So they're taking the money rather than giving it to the state. The state did not expect that. They were expecting $45 million in revenue from that tax. They didn't get it because all the big brands were like, "No, we'll take the 10 cents." I was first a little nervous about your 10 cent concept, and once you fully explained it, I think it makes great sense because it's even across the board for everyone. So with the paper bags and the grocery stores, it's about changing behaviors. Every consumer changes behaviors. And me and my wife were talking after the meeting last night. She's a former marketing person, and it's, to change behaviors, you just have to take this new regulation and somehow market it in your favor. Change your consumers' behaviors and their attitudes, and it's all how you market it. I have not figured that out yet because my wife just brought it up last night. But she did have a solid point. It's like, it's how you market it. And to finish off, I would just like to say that I don't know how the rest of the public feels here. If, we always get government mandates. I'd much prefer one from my local government than from the state or federal government because you guys know us, you see us, you understand this community. As compared to a senator from South Dakota who's never stepped foot in Groton, I'd rather hear it from you guys than someone who's never been here. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all that have signed up, but there are a lot of people in the room, so I'm just going to ask if there's anyone else who would like to speak. If so, you can just please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and I'll record it here.
My name is Jim Furlong. I live at 57 Fish Town Lane in Groton. I just want to note briefly that I'm a pretty old guy, as you can see. When I was in high school, I read a book called Contiki, which probably most of you heard of. It was about a trip by a Norwegian explorer named Tor Hyadral. He sailed a raft from South America to the Polynesian Islands. And one of the things that so much struck the readers, including me, is that out in the middle of the Pacific, he discovered a small amount of trash, and the public was absolutely astounded by that. How could that possibly get out there? What we're seeing now is an island as big as Texas. Things are moving very fast, and that took 75 years, but now the next 20 years are going to be the acceleration of this, unless we do something about it, the acceleration of this sort of thing is going to be fantastic. So, I'm just saying what we're all hearing, but I'm trying to give it a little more perspective over time. I congratulate you, the Conservation Commission and the council, on taking this all very seriously. I would say, following what Ashley said, that we probably need here in Groton a few no-littering signs. We're a coastal community. There's nothing very objectionable about having no-littering signs, and it would make a lot of difference. But getting rid of the plastic at the source is very important, but so is picking up all the rest of the stuff, and on an individual basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furlong. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Albert Cologne, and I live at 21 Broad Street Extension here in Groton, and I'm also RTM-elect for District 3. And originally, I wasn't planning on talking today, but something inside me was like, "Albert, you're 20 years old, you're probably the youngest person in this room, you have to talk." So like I said, first of all, I'd like to say, I'm probably the youngest person in this room to be, I'm 20 years old to be exact. And I think that this plastics ban is an amazing idea and something that Groton probably should have done years ago, not now. But it's something that I'm glad that we're actually getting to now. And I went to the Plastics Education Forum and learned so much about all the plastics that we think are recyclable but in reality aren't, that we throw in our recycling bin and they're never really recycled. And also, something, I heard the professor from UConn that's here, and I went actually to UConn Avery Point to go visit one of my friends, and I noticed that they actually weren't using the plastic straws, they were using paper straws. And at first, I was like, "Whoa, I don't know about paper straws. This is something that you're not going to be able to drink out of." But I noticed that, you know, it lasted me through my whole drink. But I noticed that, you know, it lasted me through my whole drink, and I actually refilled the bottle that I had, drank some water, and it still lasted me. So, I was very shocked and surprised to see that, although it wasn't as like a plastic straw that it gets a little bit wet, it's still something that, it's still usable. And another thing that I want to say is that plastics affect our environment so much, and I think that Groton, many people try to say that, you know, just Groton making this plastics ban isn't going to make a difference. But if we don't do this, who's going to do it in reality? Because the federal government isn't going to do this, and as the Manana Cafe owner said, this is something that he'd rather hear from his local government, from people who actually know him on a personal level, instead of someone that has never stepped foot in his own cafe. So, as I said, you know, the federal government isn't going to do this, the state has way too many things to worry about at this moment instead of plastics. And I'd like to thank all of you for giving your time and being here and for actually listening. And I'd also like to say, you know, if, the one thing that my church taught me is, love is sacrifice. So, if you really love your kids, your great-grandkids, and your grandchildren, move forward with this because this is something that if you don't deal with now, my generation is going to have to deal with, and something that we're going to have to live with. So, I thank you for your time, and I hope you have a great night.
Thank you.[681.29][681.29](Applause). Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't signed up?
How's it going? My name's Tyler Hayful. I'm 3 Palmer Neck Road in Pawtucket, Connecticut. First, I want to thank the Conservation Committee for doing everything they're doing, and thank you all for coming over this, coming together over this issue, this is really important. I started a litter removal organization two years ago called Trash Talk, and we've, I mean, several tons, over 7,000, 8,000 pounds of trash we've picked up with, can't tell you how many little kids. And it's very important that we set an example for these kids, right? And I don't need to sit here and spout off more facts as to why, you know, single-use plastics are a negative thing. I think you're all educated enough to know the negative impacts, right? And now it's just your decision, is it important enough? Is it going to affect my kids, my grandkids, right? Like you just said, I got to live with it. My kids got to live with it. I got to, and look around you, which way is the wind blowing, right? So, don't get left behind because Providence, Newport, Westerly's coming soon, real soon, I think around Christmas. I'm on the committee in Stonington, we just passed that, right? Waterford's looking at it, Madison. You're right in the middle, jump on board, you know, it's very important.[791.12][791.12](Laughter). You know, don't get left behind. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Tyler. Good to see you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else who would like to speak? And anyone else who would like to speak? Thank you. Before we close out the hearing, I just needed to mention that there will be language included in the ordinance that includes a jurisdictional exemption for the city of Groton and Groton Long Point. And I think what we will do is, we will close the hearing and take a five-minute recess so that, before we move on to our next item. So, thank you very mu...
I need to...
Okay. Some of the councilors would like to respond, so we will take care of that next. So, Councilor Zepary?
I am particularly gratified by the...
Excuse me. Some of the councilors wanted to respond to the comments that were received, please. So, Councilor Zepary, the floor is yours.
I am particularly gratified by the number of people who have come out tonight and have given their feedback and their support for this ordinance. I'm frankly surprised. I only hope that this will be a trend that will continue. There are many things that we consider, and we need your support, and we need you to come out and say what you think. Sometimes, we're not going to like what you say. I liked almost all of what I heard tonight, and I am encouraged by it and gratified by it. I'd just like to say one thing. Someone's, was it Mr. Primo, who said he doesn't understand why it wasn't done long ago? And I'd like to recall that to you, that this is the first Democratic council that Groton has had in a large number of years. And so, we've only been here for two years, and we've taken this up in our first term in control of the council. Thank you so much.
Councilor Furlong?
Thank you. I just would like to say thank you for coming out. All your concerns were heard. I think it's not a new concept, it's actually sad that we're still at this point. I agree that we should have acted long ago. I remember, you know, growing up in this area, and this was, you know, embedded in your head to reduce, reuse, recycle, and yet we're still not fully where we need to be. I personally think that this is a great starting point. I think there's more to be done. I think it's not just single-use, it's the reusable plastic that still is extremely toxic, right down to pens, to a lot of other things, the list goes on. The styrofoam in particular, you know, it's, I brought this issue up many years ago. They were using, they went from the washable trays at the high school to styrofoam. When I was there, I graduated in '98, and I was one of the students eating off of those trays for many years. My children now are juniors, junior in high school, and one in eighth grade, still eating on styrofoam trays. What that I've read, styrofoam was never meant to be, you know, in contact with heat the way that it dispenses all the toxins. And so, to think that children in our school district, as we speak right now, and I've come before, you know, eating hot pizza melting on that styrofoam tray. I understand that some people feel that it should be the ownership of the individual to educate themselves, but some people don't understand and even take their cup of coffee, that styrofoam, and put it in their microwave and reheat it. And I go through the roof, I see people at my job, you know, and I just think that there's a lack of education out there, a lack of understanding, and this is just, I think, a great starting point. I think styrofoam coolers that people take to the beach and throw away after one-time use. So, I just think it's important to be proactive versus reactive, and there's a big mess to be made, but anything that we can do to change things now will only benefit everybody as a whole. And I think as a community, it's something we must do, looking at our children, who we encourage to learn about our environment, and every day to think that they get a styrofoam tray and wonder, what am I doing? You know, my children have addressed me about it. And I just thank you for all your comments and concerns. I think there's no perfect ordinance, but we need somewhere to start. I feel a little frustrated by the fact that the city and Groton Long Point are not including it in this ordinance, simply because the city is along the coast, and so as well as Groton Long Point, but there's not as many businesses in Groton Long Point. But let's see where this goes. I think, I think there's a lot that can be done. I think your input and your encouragement is only going to get us to where we have to go. And once again, I thank you for your time and understanding and support for our health in this community. That's the angle that we've really got to think of. Thank you.
Councilor Bumgardner-Franko and then Heed?
I will not belabor these issues because I understand we'll be recessing after this where we'll be taking advantage of a much-needed break. But I do want to just give a quick shout-out to Albert. It is tough being the youngest guy in the room a lot of the time. So, it's a much-needed reprieve to have you, and the RTM in your district is very lucky to have you. But nonetheless, do want to point out one thing. You had made a comment that the state has many problems on its hands to be focused on these issues, and I would disagree with you slightly. I think the state should be paying attention to this just as much as so many of you in the crowd are. Tonight, we're calling for a ban on polystyrene cups. That's huge. As Councilor Furlong has mentioned, the health impacts are great. It is, should not be safe to, you know, it's not safe to consume anything out of those products. So, you know, I think long-term, I think we need, ought to look at extending a ban on styrene products such as large containers. Councilor Furlong has supported that, as I do. I also support a 10-cent fee on paper bags, and as this ordinance will continue to go through its final last leg, I will be supporting that as well, and will be imploring my fellow councilors to get on board with that. And last but not least, many of you have noticed the litter that is shroomed all throughout the town, and the number-one culprit, especially at those cleanups, are those nip bottles. We need to take a look at that, we need to take a look at extending a ban on those products because those are the plastics that get into our stormwater drains and getting into our rivers, and certainly the Long Island Sound, and the health, not just the health impacts on humans, but the ecological impacts are immense. So, thank you, each and every one of you, for sharing your concerns. I'm so excited that we have the support of such an overwhelming majority of citizens who are demanding change and demanding a transformative direction that we're taking with respect to taking care of our planet here in this town. So, keep thinking globally, keep acting locally, and just know we have your backs.
Councilor Franko?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I wish you would all stay this involved and come to a lot of our meetings. I am excited about having a plastic reduction ordinance. I think there are some things that maybe we could tweak a little bit or look at, and I think in the future, these are things we should look at on an annual basis. When it comes to litter, the beautification committee is working on cleanups, and I think we could do more to have what has been mentioned here tonight, maybe some enforcement, and maybe some signs, and trying to educate the public. But also, something that just rang out to me tonight was when the owner of Manana said, you have to market this correctly. And I think this is something very important, and I was actually speaking to his wife last night, and I had gone to Black Island a year ago, year and a half ago, and I sat in a restaurant, and they didn't hand me a straw. And my first thought was, why aren't they giving me a straw? Did she forget? And then I was looking at my menu, and as I got to the last page, it was written on there as why there was no straw and why they were doing what they were doing. And then I was acceptable, and then I'm like, oh, well, I don't even need a straw, and that's fine, and I'm on board now because I understood why and what was happening. And, but I'm sure I could have asked for one, and I know Black Island, like they had banned balloons and other things, and they said, because no matter where you are on this island, if there's litter, it's going to blow into the water, and they're trying to do their part. So, something that had just popped in my head right now is that I think that maybe we may want to send it to a committee of some sort, and we should market this, and maybe have posters that restaurants and businesses can put in their windows and say, we're trying to make a change, and we're all in this together, and make it an exciting thing, and why we're doing it. And that may help some of the businesses help market it the proper way so that people are maybe more understanding, because I know there's going to be pushback. And restaurants and the business owners are the ones who are going to have to deal with it, and they're going to be face-to-face with those customers who are very upset, and they're the ones who are going to have to listen to those people complain. It's not going to probably be us, we may get letters, but they're the ones who are on a day-to-day basis going to be listening to people. So, I think we should maybe do more to help these businesses as well. And, but I am excited about it, and I'm grateful for the overwhelming support from the community tonight and while everybody's here. So, thank you for coming out, and...
Councilor Heed and then Obray?
I also want to thank everyone for coming out. All of the science that you bring with you is, you know, humbling. And I just think back, and I'm especially thankful to Justin Primo for coming out from Manana and the Dunkin' Donuts, Ashley, because having the businesses on board with this is a key component to the success of the ordinance. And, you know, I think back through my own personal experience where I used to frequent Dunkin' Donuts quite a bit, but to be honest, I boycotted them several years ago. I've been writing letters asking for them to change over from styrofoam cups to paper cups, and finally, I got the letter, I think, three months ago saying they were doing that, and I can't wait because I love your coffee.[1491.01][1491.01](Laughter). So, but I'd really like you to be part of the solution. So, if, I know that there are straws out there, for example, that hold up a little bit better, but nothing's going to be perfect. I think we need to engage our customers and the public in coming up with alternative, like bring your own cups, buy some straws, that kind of thing. And I just look forward to seeing how this all rolls out.
Thank you. Councilor Obray?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, last night at the meeting, there was a lot of discussion from businesses, and Bill Groves, who was running the meeting for us, put together a synopsis of what was talked about, and I just want to put back into this discussion. The plastic straw ban was the concern most widely discussed by business interests and also some consumers. Discussion includes the high cost of less desirable alternatives to plastic straws, consumer straw preferences, and why the straw ban was targeted. So, I want you all to think about that while we're thinking about how we go forward with this. I think there has to be something done for the business people that have to adjust to it, and I want you to have that in your thought process as I will, as we talk more about it, because it can't be ignored, it's a consideration, and I hope you all appreciate the fact that that's something that I'm hoping this group is going to talk about in order to try to keep a balance. So, I hope you maybe can put that in your thoughts as you're thinking about things, that we could, in our desire to do things correctly, which I do want to do this, and I want, but I want to do it correctly. I don't want to do it where it's a burden on somebody financially. You know, I'll just share with you, my son and I had a business, and it was a very marginal business, but my son loved the car wash. And the state put a extra tax on every car that went through that car wash. That was the end of our business. So, I'm very sensitive to what can happen to businesses, and I want you all to think about that, too. I have grandchildren, I have children, I want the best world for them, but I don't want to lose a business in Groton. So, I hope you'll think about that also.
And I don't think the other councilors wish to speak, so I will just throw in my two cents. Again, thank you all for coming out. It's great to hear from everybody. The styrofoam component is an important part for me. I'm very much pleased that it was included in the ban, and I just wanted to say I'm particularly heartened that I've just discovered that the school that I teach at is going to be getting rid of all their styrofoam products by the end of the school year, and Groton Public Schools are also getting rid of theirs. The concern I have is that a couple of the newer schools that we just built don't have dishrooms, which is appalling to me. So, I'm hoping that the two new elementary schools will have dishrooms built into them, Hello Permanent School Building Committee. So, that's something else we have to pursue on a separate note, but I'm pleased that we're moving forward with this. I'm glad you came out with your concerns, and we will go forward and consider all the opinions that were presented tonight and all the, again, the concerns that you brought forward to us. So, with that, unless Mr. Burt wanted to add anything? Okay, we will recess, we close the public hearing. Thank you very much, and we're going to recess for five minutes. Okay. So, now, I will reconvene, special time council meeting at 9:42. And we are on to 2019-725-1, Local 818 of Council Number 4, American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Collective Bargaining Agreement. Who's up?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Resolution of proven that tentative agreement reached between the town and Local 818 of Council Number 4, ASME-AFL-CIO for the term July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022. Whereas the town of Groton and Local 818 of Council Number 4, ASME-AFL-CIO, reached a tentative agreement on a successor collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022, and whereas the bargain... 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022, and whereas the bargaining unit membership voted to approve the agreement, and whereas approval was recommended by the Town's negotiators, therefore be it resolved, the Groton Town Council hereby approves the agreement and the expenditure of funds necessary to implement their agreement. Inclusive Attachment C Pension Agreement between the Town and Local 818 of Council Number 4, ASME-AFL-CIO, on successor collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022, I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Is there a discussion on this item? Councilor Boardman?
Once again, a lot of this negotiation happened before my time. I only recently got to be part of some of it, and just want to put that on the record.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-725, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Boardman. Motion to adjourn? Yes. Moved by Parker to adjourn.
Aye.
Seconded by Franco. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So move unanimously. We are adjourned at 9:45. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nathan.